Go ahead. Well, good evening, everyone. What a beautiful Monday it's been. And of course, it's been a whole week since a huge announcement last Monday. And I know you all have some great stories of people who have reached out and shared and talked about how great this is for our community. So let's go ahead with tonight's meeting. This is the fifteenth meeting in the one hundred and forty-third Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. And as usual, we'll start off asking any of any members have any conflicts of interest, of pecuniary interest on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes.
I have motion that the minutes of the meeting held on March the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three be confirmed. Moved by Counsel Peter, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor. Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Counsel Clark, I'm even catching your hand online tonight. That's that's perfect. All right, next, next item.
Council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to the City of St. Thomas, two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan update and new strategic plan, uh, planning process. I have motion that ADM oh nine twenty-three relating to the City of St. Thomas, two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan update and new strategic planning process be received for information. Moved by Counsel Baldwin-San, seconded by Counsel McCauley.
Okay, on the, on the report, will we be covering any of it or just asking questions on the report? City manager?
Thank you, worship through you. And we're happy to take any questions that council might have. The report provides an outline of an update on the current strat plan and a plan for moving forward with the updated strat plan for two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-six. So we're happy to take questions based on what's in the information and Taylor's here as well.
Okay, great. So questions, Counsel Baldwin says.
Thank you. First question is the same question I asked the last time in regards to housing. I was hoping the city manager would provide that update from this report and provide that to people that might be at home watching.
City manager?
Thank you, worship through you to members of council. We continue to work diligently around the issues of housing in our community. Obviously, this council is firmly behind that and has made it a priority in its strat plan, development of housing. You know that we have been working with our colleagues at Indwell to create the three, two different projects, one at railway city lots above our transit building where we've created sixteen units for individuals with high acuity and specific needs. And we provide supportive housing there. So that's a number that we've created there. This summer, and summer is a period of time, so between spring and summer, we'll be opening up forty-five Queen, or sorry, ten Queen Street with forty-five units of supportive housing as well. Just recently, we have supported, in principle, a contribution to Tiny Hope, the project being led by Sanctuary Homes and Doug Terry and with the proponent as the YWCA. They are in the midst of, or I think they've made their application to for federal funding, and they're still looking for provincial funding as well, another three million dollars they're looking for as well. We hope that that's successful, that the federal government is interested in providing supports, and that'll be another forty units. In addition to that, we continue to support a third project. There was an indication when we first started to work with Indwell that we'd look at a third project. They've been in town over the last number of months, obviously with their current project that they're working on, but also looking at other options for some additional units. The biggest challenge we're going to have is funding. And so we continue to work. Uh, our team in social services works with the provincial government and the federal government to determine what funding is available. There's an announcement made last Friday by the federal government with respect to additional funding. And we'll need to get some more information about how that might work for us as well. But we continue to support that. There are a number of other organizations in the community who are looking at housing development. Funding will continue to be a challenge, and we'll try as best as we can to leverage our own funding and the provincial and federal funding to create those units.
Thank you. My next question out of that report is to Mr. Bray. And that is the city trail system, how we are going to exceed our goal and objective. I was hoping to provide some, hopefully he will be able to provide some additional feedback in regards to the goals and objectives that this council has set around the strategic plan with trails, et cetera.
Great. Mr. Bray?
Thank you, Mayor Preston. I don't know about exceed, but we will meet the, the objective with the help of environmental services who manages the tenders and, and contracts, subsequent contracts. Uh, it's been a pretty good run for the last two, three years. They're very well received by the public. And just the fact that they're all hardscaped is makes them, we're able to maintain them all year round. Or we have trail counters up through Pinnerfore Park and in the dead of winter, we're getting thousands and thousands of people on a weekly basis.
Further questions or comments, Counsel Peters, and then Counsel Gibson?
Thanks very much, worship. I really want to focus in on, on stage one, and that's the beginning of the, the community engagement and stakeholder engagement. And, and I, I hope through you, worship to Sandra and Taylor, that we, we really try a full court press on reaching out to the community and maybe is there a way that we can partner with the chamber on this? I know the chamber used to have a very good list of non, not-for-profit organizations in the community. And, and I think we, if we can spend some time, because some of those, you know, not-for-profits are, you know, in the community for specific reasons. And, and I think at least we can say that we've reached out to them. So I, I really want to focus in on that, and I look forward to seeing what they come back with. And then we'll deal with the, the subsequent stages. But I, I think let's hit the ground running and let's try and reach as many people as possible.
Great point. Counsel Gibson?
Thank you, worship. Just under vibrant community goal, number five, I was just wondering, it says here, you had a committee formed, formed June two thousand and twenty-one. Is that committee still in existence with the post-secondary school and, and for the educations of skill and training needs in the community? And if there's any ongoing work with that as well, thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, worship. Great question. Thank you for that question. I'm Adam, Counsel Gibson. We have ongoing communication with our colleagues at Fanchow College, just as I came in this evening, I received another request. They are obviously trying to support the types of programs that they offer at the college here in St. Thomas with the types of needs that we have across the city, both at the city and in our broader piece. The mayor and I also attend, I, I would say on a quarterly basis, your worship, I think that's mostly what we've been doing, discussions with the school boards, both the Catholic School Board and the Public School Board. And they give us some ideas about kind of how they're planning for schools, how they're planning for pupil use and those kind of things. So we're, we're using those two opportunities. And I would suggest to you that a committee does exist, but in those formats, it happens in a number of different types of different ways, if that makes sense.
And a follow-up, please. So is there, has there been any talk with Fanchow since the, the, the lands now and that we know that, that we're getting the battery factory? Has there been any approach by them as yet?
Thank you, your worship. I would say that we'll, we're just in the preliminary phases of that. And I think over the next little while, a little better sense about that, about all of the post-secondary opportunities there are for people and for training as well.
Thanks, worship. A chicken and egg question, I guess, for the city manager and for staff. So we have master plans for different departments, right? So we have these master plans and, and they, they don't come out at the same time like an official plan, like they get staggered out. I think they don't all renew at the same time. It's when needed. As we go for a new planning process, do the master plans get updated first? And then, like, what drives what in that process? Because as everybody knows me knows, I'm, I'd love to see a big loop trail system finished in the city at some point, and with the VW lands, that's got me very encouraged. So do we do like a new master parks or trails master plan first before we do the plan? Or how, how does that work in terms of the planning and the timeframes? Because I would think doing new master plan, departments would need six months for that anyway. Thank you very much.
Maybe I'll start with kind of process, your worship. I think through you to the members of council, Counsel Wookie raises a very important question. And it's part of the biggest challenge with strat planning is what is the snapshot in time? And how do you fix, how do you figure into a strategic plan, the work we do on a daily basis and the versus the work that we want to see as priorities for the community? Just over the last couple of weeks, the senior leadership here at the city identified what they view to be priorities for this year, for two thousand and twenty-three. So we're starting to look at those priorities. And we'll try as best as we can to, to move those into the strat plan moving forward. We're also going to have an opportunity, not only to talk to the community, but I'm also going to talk to staff to get a sense about what they're thinking as well. The chicken and egg discussion is a challenging one. I think we know there are certain plans we need to have in place, whether they're legislatively responsible, responsible for that, or there are things that, that a good community has to have in place. We'll identify those within the strat plan as their current reality, but know that they might be updated in the future. And know that the strat plan is a living document, and it will continue to be updated over a period of time. But it will be regrettably, that snapshot when you develop it. And then we will report on updates as we did tonight on things that have changed since the, since the strat plan's been established, if that, if that makes sense. I think what I'm trying to say is we do it for a period of time, and then we'll update it so it's current.
Counsel Wookie? Okay, because yeah, because I'm thinking like master plans for departments might, you know, I don't know how long that they are tabled for. Like, so if we've had, if you're in year four of a four-year master plan, I would think you'd want to get on redoing it before we do the strategic plan. But if you've just done your master plan, then I think you're sitting with that. But where do you draw the line and how does that work? Because obviously with, with the new things that are happening in St. Thomas, I'm thinking master plans, as well as strategic plans change.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Counsel Wookie. First of all, I remember when we first started even the strategic plan, you said it, it can't be a document that just collects dust. So it's an active, growing plan, right? And this is why we're back at council tonight with it, to review kind of where we're at. And I love your thoughts of then how does that take carry into the department plans? But last week's announcement may make us rethink even some of those, and I thank you for bringing up that connection too. Thanks. Counsel McCauley?
Thank you. I just, I agree with Counsel Peters about the full press on gathering feedback, you know, working with our many community partners and also utilizing places like the Horton Market, Joe Thornton, offering not just an option for online, but in person and really reaching out to our community and getting as many as possible.
Yep, I agree. I expect this weekend at the home show, we will hear a lot of views, and especially if we ask directly, hey, we're, we're reviewing our strategic plan, and here are the things that are on it. There will be a board there that says that, or a, a card for them to be able to, what do you call it now, QR code, what they're thinking too. So we hope to collect a lot in a lot of different ways. And Steve, you're right, we have a lot of not-for-profits in this community we need to reach out to and say, hey, what do you, what do you think of the city's strategic plan versus where your organization is heading? Further discussion? Right, seeing, seeing none, then accepting the report. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members under this committee, we'll now move into community engagement and services. First item relates to land ambulance service enhancement. I have motion that report ADM oh seven twenty-three relating to the land ambulance paramedic service enhancement be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookie, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Okay, questions or comments on the land ambulance service enhancement? Counsel Wookie?
Thank you very much. For those folks at home that are tuning into this, I thought it was very interesting that there are times where the weakness in the landing ambulance service outside of St. Thomas has a negative impact on St. Thomas. So when it comes time to spend some money and people, and the money's going to get spent for services outside of St. Thomas, there's a tertiary benefit for us that I think that we need to be aware of. But then, and also, I thought it was very interesting that essentially we are, you know, benefiting from the good graces of our neighbors in Chatham, Kent, and in Oxford as well. And we want to be good neighbors as well to establish that service. But I thought, you know, every time an ambulance gets called to St. Thomas to go to, and if it's got to go to Port Burwell, that's a long trip, say, then that's leaving us weaker here. So I think it benefits us to help others. Thank you.
Great piece. We were out last week to the kind of ribbon cutting on the paramedic, para- right? Paramedicine. Thank you very much. Exactly. Good, good. Thank you for helping because I was never going to get there. And just to see the great people that are out now working on this and, and, and some of the great aspects they said about this program is keeping seniors in their home because they have this service. Certainly helping general practitioners and the doctors of many of these people had do a better job. This is one more offering now that helps keep, keep people healthy. And I hadn't thought of it that way. You know, you think of an ambulance service to be what it is and what its primary mission is, but now this is just a fantastic addition to the whole county. And as you said, the neighboring counties benefit, and we benefit from having them running a similar service. Further questions on this report? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to the fire department emergency response statistics. Have a motion that report FD oh one twenty-three relating to the fire department emergency response statistics be received for information. A move by Counsel Herbert, seconded by Counsel McCauley.
Questions or comments? Counsel Gibson, then McCauley, and then Counsel Herbert.
Thank you, worship. I was just wondering if the fire, yes, if the fire chief could explain some of the rules of burning in the backyard? Because I know it's starting. I have a neighbor that started yesterday. So maybe if we could have a few words on some of the bylaws on that. Thank you.
Chief, great to have you here.
Counselor, the burn by law is set in place, and there's certain things you have to fall into to be allowed to burn. You have to have so much square footage in your backyard, you have to be so far from a fence, you have to be so far from your neighbors. It has to be in a contained fire pit, has to be manned by someone who is capable of putting it out. You have to have a fire, you have to have a garden hose there. It has to fall into, and there has to be for purposes of cooking. So the bylaw is pretty straightforward, and a lot of times we go to these, they're not within the bylaw. It fall outside the bylaw, and then that's when we go and we either ask them to extinguish it, or we put it out for them.
Use the really powerful hose to put it out when that's-
Yes, they're a little disappointed when we-
Yeah, yeah. Counsel McCauley?
Uh, thank you, and thank you for this report. It was quite an eye-opener, actually. When I look at it, so sixty-three percent of calls are medical resuscitator calls, so not really anything to do with a fire. And this has seen an increase of forty-five percent, or a forty-five percent increase from two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. So considering the growth we are anticipating, you know, what are the next steps for the fire depart, department to prepare for this growth?
Through you, Mayor, to Counsel McCauley. Great question. So we are already on track to surpass this. We're running right now about ten calls, ten med calls a day. Saturday, I think they're, while we were doing a walk, a charity walk, the trucks were all out at the same time on separate medical calls, and they ran, I think, fifteen calls that night. We are extremely busy with the medical calls, and they vary from any type of service, from shortness of breath to medical VSAs to overdoses and delay of EMS, delay of EMS. And we just touched on that in our previous, you know, report of how this is going to enhance it. When St. Thomas leaves, either they're tied up and emerge, or they've gone to help our, our neighbors, that puts us, and that leaves us on scene. And then we just received a new medical directive that we have to assist. If we're first on scene, we have to conduct twenty minutes of CPR now. It used to be ten minutes of CPR, now it's twenty minutes. And then when the medics arrive and they need help, the CPR process will continue for another twenty minutes because they're the higher medical authority. We continue with the CPR. So now our guys are possibly doing CPR for forty minutes straight. That taxes them. They're, you know, I've done CPR before for, you know, five minutes, and it's very wearing. It's, it's, it's a full workout. So now they're doing it for forty minutes, and now our guys, so the, our big million-dollar truck is running out that door ten to twelve times a day for medical calls other than other, and then put that on top of the fire calls, the false alarms, the motor vehicle incidents. And, and, and now with the council talking about the burn things, now we're going number also, our numbers are going to be through the roof again for two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Can I go to Counsel Clark? Because I'll, I'll miss him if I don't go to Counsel Clark next. Counsel Clark?
Thank you, worship, through you to the chief. I'm hoping that because of the increase-
He's very quiet tonight. That's not normal for Counsel Clark.
Can you hear me now?
He appear to be on, but let me, your mic now should be okay.
Okay, thank you. Through you to the chief, the question was, hopefully that we can-
Sorry, Counsel Clark, you're muted at this time. We're just looking into that.
Now he's muted. Now he's unmuted. Try again, Gary.
Can you hear me now? It says I'm not muted.
Could you, could you type out what you want and hold it in front of you? Yeah, sorry. I'm not trying to be-
Okay.
But you, you appear to be unmuted, but we're not getting you, so. Trying some other turning up speakers and stuff right now. Hang on.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, there we go. Go ahead.
It might have been from my end. The question was with regard to the trucks going out. I'm just hoping that in the next budget and as we work on strategic plans, we could be looking at what the next type of medical emergency vehicle could be for the fire department? It, it seems, it seems a burden to bring out a million-dollar truck and all the diesel that's being burned and, and the size of it for some of those calls. And I'm just wondering if there's a, if fire departments in other larger jurisdictions have found a, a more of a mid-size or smaller vehicle that's more equipped for medical emergencies. Thank you.
Chief? Through you, Mayor, to Counsel Clark. That's a great question. That's something we've already started to look at. You can get into a, a larger size, full cab truck with a, with a box on the back that's really inexpensive compared to running a fire truck. And we can leave our heavy rescue for those calls. We have people that can, and we call the term hot seating, where you jump from one truck to another truck, depending on what the call is. We're getting to the point where we're getting to be a big department. We're going to start needing some things. And, and Counsel Clark, that's a great question. And it's something we've already started to look into, running a small, not a small pickup truck, but a, like a full-size pickup truck with a bed on it and then just for medical purposes only.
Sounds great. Further question, Counsel Clark? You're good. Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship, through to Chief Gregory. On the non-fire calls, you, you have a lot of numbers under false fire calls. Could you just expand what you mean by false fire calls? Are they people calling in saying there's a fire, there's no fire? Or is this all medical stuff? Or just a little expansion on it would be good because you have a lot of them.
Through you, Mayor, to Counsel Herbert. Great question. So a lot of those could be the humid days where we get false alarms. Alarms go ringing at any of the schools, the hospitals, factories. We'll go to a factory where a forklift is backed into a pole station, and the alarm goes off. That's a non-emergency call that we go to. People will call first thing in the morning in the spring when the sun's out and the snow has melted on the roofs and to see smoke coming off a roof, that, perceive that as a working fire. We get those calls and they're not emergencies. But we respond to everything like it, it is an emergency until we get there. You get the nine-one-one hangup calls we have to look at, and then, you know, the perceived smoke alarm going off where it isn't actually a fire, where it could be anything. And those, those are the things that we go to that are non-fire calls.
Just a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
It might take some work, and it'd be interesting for me to drill that down and break them all down to see, because I, I find that when you have two hundred and thirty, two hundred and sixty-four, that seems like a lot of false alarms going off and stuff like, I, I don't need it tonight. It's just an FYI. So maybe sometime drill down on it just to see what, how important that is. That's important to know. You're running everywhere, and it's not a true thing. So anyway.
Exactly. We, and we can break that down. I can, I can, I can send everybody that. We get, we put those through to the fire marshal and what they're broke down as that. But there's so many to read through that they're, they're different. But that's a great question. You know, when the call comes in, they're all, they're all real calls until we determine that they're not.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Counsel Peters?
Thanks, worship. Chief, when you, you prefaced your report, you talked about using Woodstock as the comparator. And even with, though, when you look at those medical assistance calls and our numbers versus Woodstock numbers, still fourteen hundred calls more than Woodstock had. You know, I watched the same thing Saturday in the downtown core of a fire truck and an ambulance and a police car at one house in the core. And almost simultaneously, right in front of my house, I had a fire truck, two ambulances, two police cars, and EMS Chevy Blazer or something like that. And you just think the cost and the resources and, yeah, and, and I recognize why we've got to do it. But it just strikes me that our numbers are so high compared to, and I wouldn't mind not looking for the answer tonight, but I'd just like to know, is this an anomaly with St. Thomas, or is this something that fire services of all sizes are experiencing?
Chief?
Through you, Mayor, to Counsel Peters. Great question. No, this is not an anomaly. This is like, St. Thomas is unique that we have such a unique population. We have an elderly population here compared to a lot of other cities. We go on those shortness of breath calls. Because of where we are, I'm not sure of the, the Oxford agreement for their tiered response and the delay of EMS they might have. Our St. Thomas paramedics are extremely busy, and a lot of those calls that we do go on are delay of EMS. And then the shortness of breath and stuff like that. St. Thomas goes on so many different calls. Woodstock may not do the same variety of calls we do. They may scale back on some stuff, which we don't want to go down that direction. When you stop delivering a service that weakens the, the service that you're delivering, St. Thomas has such a great delivery service, we don't want to start scaling back what we go to.
Further questions for the chief on the report? Thank you, chief. Then all in favor? Those opposed? That's carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members under this committee, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. First report is relating to the appointment of a drainage superintendent for municipal drains. A motion that report ES fourteen twenty-three relating to municipal drains, an appointment of a drainage superintendent be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to appoint Nathan Bockma as the drainage superintendent for the City of St. Thomas pursuant to the Drainage Act, RSO nineteen ninety. Moved by Counsel McCauley, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. And this would probably be directed to you, your worship. When I read this, is this just not an operation or a procedural change? Nathan already reports to Justin, so do we, and there's no financial changes. Do we have to might pass that as a motion to grant that? Or is that not something he can't do internally? I did-
I think Justin will, will, will help me with this, but I think we have to have an appointed drain superintendent by Ontario Legislature. My-
But I'm just suggesting he can do that without having council approve it.
I mean, I think it's on the Ontario Act, probably says council has to approve it.
Just need to know for my own information.
All right. Counsel McCauley?
Kind of along those lines as Counsel Herbert was. So if I understand correctly, this is already a position, but by passing this tonight, it allows us to tap into funding to cover some of the cost of this position. So it's not a net new position, it's existing position. But by following through on this process, then we can tap into funding. Is that my, is my understanding correct?
Mr. Lawrence?
That's correct. You found the important part in this. Nathan already exists as an employee. There's no added cost for us to make this happen, but there's a potential to gain- uh, re- cost for us to make this happen, but there's a potential to gain some funds back. Depending on how many drains we do, um, we can recover some of the costs. So it's a, it's a financial positive.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next report relates to updates to the traffic bylaw to uh, encompass development and capital work. Have motion that report E S fifteen twenty-three relating to updates to bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine to encompass twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three development and capital work. Be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine. Moved by councillor Kohler, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Uh, questions or comments? If, if I can add, I believe this is to ensure that all the new streets in this community are now listed in from a bylaw point of view, that they are streets in our community. So for those folks at home, that's what this one does. Further questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless the members have any further items for this committee, we'll now move, I'm sorry, councillor Gibson has an item, your worship.
Councillor Gibson?
Just under old business for this area. Um, Dawn Dogger, she uh, sent a letter to uh, MAC in regards to the curb uh, for the new uh, infrastructure that's being done on Talbot Street. She was just wondering if there was any consideration of um, of the barriers being looked at and maybe in, in extending them. Um, she hasn't heard anything and I was just following up for her at this point. Thank you. Maybe staff can maybe help us out with that. Thank you.
Justin, you help us with this, please?
Uh, thanks for the question. Yes. So um, Ed Vandermael, uh, as the representative of the MAC committee, um, took that information and he came and he had a long discussion with us about the pros and cons of it. Uh, we responded to Ed about um, what can happen and what can't happen. So um, he has all that information. Uh, so presumably, you know, uh, either he or the MAC committee can decide how to respond to the, you know, the person that asked the question.
Thank you. I'll, I'll follow up with Dawn on that as well. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Your worship, uh, if there are no further items, we'll now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to municipal access agreement for the start dot C A assignment request. Have motion that report E S sixteen twenty-three relating to the start dot C A assignment request be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared authorizing mayor and clerk to sign an assignment agreement with start dot C A and Talis Communications Incorporated. A move by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members, that concludes the committee work for this evening and council will now reconvene into regular session. Have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee, the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
No reports of committees this evening. We now move into petitions and communications. First item relates to a request for proclamation and flag raising from victim services Elgin. Have motion that council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim May fourteenth to twentieth twenty twenty-three as victims and survivors of crime week in the city of St. Thomas. And further, that the victim services Elgin flag be flown from May sixteenth to twentieth twenty twenty-three. And further, that a flag raising ceremony be held on May sixteenth twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? If I can add, we are, because of the construction on Talbot Street, um, currently looking for what could be an alternate site for flag raisings and pro- proclamations. Um, for the moment, the hu- front of city hall can still be used because the sidewalk's there. But we'll be keeping any group who has a flag raising or proclamation coming up uh, in notice as to um, what change there might be if there needs to be one. So, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a copy of a letter addressed to uh, the Honorable Doug Ford Premier of Ontario from municipality of Chatham Kent, supporting Bill Five, the Stopping Harassment and Abuse by Local Leaders Act twenty twenty-two. And the last item under petitions and communications is notice from uh, the firm Republic regarding the County of Elgin draft official plan. A copy of the draft plan is available at the Elgin County website. Your worship, unless there are any items of petition from members of council?
Seeing none?
I will now move into unfinished business. Looks like there's one item, your worship, from councillor Herbert.
It, it, it's just a, a comment that, and you've just touched on it, your worship, that construction has started on Talbot Street. The barriers are up. So people who haven't been downtown yet, be prepared to go around it, so.
Um, the, the, the mayor is quite impressed today. I was i- in and out of downtown a couple of times today. But the amount of work that was accomplished in one day of the start of the construction is, this is incredible. I mean, pavement's already up, some, all the barriers are in place. We're, we're doing a lot of great stuff downtown pretty quickly. Let's hope that uh, this weather continues for the, this construction company to carry on with. But it's a, a great first day. Thank you for bringing it up, councillor Herbert. If I can, uh, just under new business or other business, I wanted to give kudos to the Shamrock Shuffle that took place on this weekend. Um, it's not always easy to go out and shuffle after St. Patrick's Day, but a group, great group of city employees also did. And I'd like to congratulate them. But this is a fundraiser for the inn. And they um, continue as a, a, you know, a private charity that runs our, our emergency shelter, continue to need your help. So those that went out and helped, excellent job. Um, and those that didn't, uh, the inn will still take your contribution. Oh, councillor Baldwin Sands, I'm sorry.
I was hoping you would update everyone on the home show.
Oh, coming up this weekend.
About it this weekend, yes.
Yes. The uh, the home show, this is a large fundraiser for our home builders. Thank you councillor Baldwin Sands for bringing it to our attention. It is sold out from how many booths it could have. Now let's make sure city of St. Thomas, it sells out from how many guests it could possibly have at the home show. Back to its original time of year, um, from a renovation point of view. Uh, the home show will be this weekend, Friday night. Uh, it, it starts um, and runs all the way through six o'clock on Sunday. So um, please come on out, support your local home builders association. And you be, would be surprised, you will be surprised what you can find at our home show. And uh, who has booths and, and how it, how it works. So thank you, oh, thank you councillor Baldwin Sands for reminding. But for the rest of you, make sure, and I know al- almost all of us are spending some time at the city of St. Thomas booth this weekend and we'd be happy to have you come out and, come out and share with us all the uh, your, your thoughts and comments on what the city of St. Thomas can also do a little better or congratulating us on the work already been done. So thank you. Anything else under new business?
Your worship, seeing no further items from the members, there is one item. Uh, we have been advised that a number of council members will be away uh, during the April third, twenty twenty-three council meeting and suggest that the meeting be canceled. And I do have a motion that the April third, twenty twenty-three council meeting be canceled. Moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Uh, questions or comments on that? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Uh, you know, I, I might add, um, should the workload in April all of a sudden come back to being more then we can schedule another meeting in April to replace the one that we've just taken away. Thank you.
Your worship, if there's no further items under new business, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that lead be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee, the whole, and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you, madam clerk, but questioning before we go into the bylaws. I only have six on my screen. I have to switch my screen to get the, the next three. So if you queue me after each one for the last three, then I can go from there without trying to find it. Okay, thank you. First bylaw, madam clerk, thank you.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and one seven four nine two nine two Ontario Inc. This is an amendment to an agricultural land lease at the St. Thomas Municipal Airport.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to assume certain lands as part of the public highway known as Fairview Avenue. This is for property, um, owned by Peter Kafchik and Marion Hudson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regulating traffic and parking of motor vehicles. This relates to street cafe patio furniture in the downtown development areas.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
The fifth bylaw is a bylaw to appoint a drainage superintendent for the city of St. Thomas, being Nathan Bookma.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried.
The sixth bylaw
Yep.
is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city, multi-board communications incorporated, operating as start dot C A and Talis Communications Incorporated. This relates to municipal access assignment agreement, uh, assets in the city rights of way.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Seventh bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws relating to traffic and parking of motor vehicles. This relates to Talbot Street parking changes, uh, no stopping zones, no parking zones, accessible parking.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Eighth bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, again, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regulating traffic and parking of motor vehicles. This relates to parking and traffic plan changes on Pine Street, Cortland Terrace, Dunning Way, Evelyn Court and Renaissance Drive.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Ninth and final bylaw is a bylaw to uh, amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regulating traffic and the parking of motor vehicles. Uh, this relates to the designation of Mary Street West Lot as a municipal parking lot location.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. I rise to report the successful passing of nine bylaws.
Great.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands, that the reported council and committee, the whole, on the nine bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time and gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
No public notice or notices of motion this evening. Uh, there is a need to move into closed session, your worship. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a labor relations matter, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land, a personal matter about an identifiable individual and two matters of a proposed or pending disposition of land. Moved by councillor McCauley, seconded by councillor Gibson.
As, as has been our norm, as we have a closed session after our open session, we will be going into closed session now. And then when we return to open session, it will be to only pass what happened in the closed session and/or to adjourn for the evening. So for those of us watching at home, thank you very much. For those of you watching at home, thank you very much. And uh, we will be now um, voting on the closed session. So all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.